Good job.
One question. We've talked about this before, you know, there's no security issues down there?
No, there's no security issues. The only thing that people are going to ask is I know the fire department in the state said, "Go to town hall, ID your picture, ID sticker from the police car," or something like that. It's something right through the door. So again, your kayak is floating away, somebody played with it or messed it out, so those cars are floating in kayak come over, so they can make a contact. So as a sign that I think I presented last year, right, so I would like to put this up. That's on, if you get the kayak, right, hey, I tell them, just write your name on it, easy to update. And most people have it, but there's some people who just kind of drop it out. Make that keep track of it.
If somebody wanted to, would they be able to run a cable through the frame of the rack?
That's absolutely a good idea. Like this around two by six.
So the part of that paragraph that we basically go over, your minimum information, that's how they'll pin one of your areas.
The second part of my thing is, so on the same similar page, I don't know if they even use the big one here. You said kayak, I went on the side here, but since we're going to put down crushed stone, three quarters stone. I need to go to Brian, I didn't play phone tag with him. Uh, I wanted to clean up the areas there, there's a lot of washout. And I got a call from, I think Sue's saying they've already had some problems mowing. So really, there's a storm bringing down there just above George's house. But now the road is settled differently again. I went down and washed it, it misses the sore completely. And that sore comes right out into the river, into the story. But that sore bit just goes out, it's missing that, and eroding all the dirt, all the way along the back.
Along the edge of the road.
All the way, so she really can't move. So we're like, okay, we gotta get some fill in there. But then all that water, I'm amazed at how much it is, you go down, all that water hits like a dirty patch, where there were rocks, now it's dirt. And it's eroded away all like fifty of the side of the pavement. And I think, just for now, coming in, just getting a good chunk of three quarters stone there, organizing it, I think more will help a lot with that, filling in the dirt, some floor you know. But then we talked, like, to some of the other ideas down there, there's a couple trees that are kind of probably be gone in the future, et cetera.
Back by the trailer we were at?
No, that's all zacks. So everything on the road is a first list, I go both different parts on my trail and so that's all zacks, Robert. It's been very tough, he asked every year, do you mind? He's like, not a problem. Yeah, why would I care? I don't want to realize it, but you guys can. Uh, this is all towards like around the tree, down like by the kayak back and up again. It's just all washed down. So I think we're talking to Brian, I don't know, I asked him about cleaning out the sore, I don't know how to do that. But also, I think there's just maybe just some roads, I think that is a bigger, a bigger project there. I need more to come on that, for you guys to understand.
Yeah, I think just getting some stones along the edge of the road there, so that gully doesn't get larger.
Yeah, it's amazing how much water it washes down. And then the last part of that is, did you get a quote from a tree guy? Uh, and I
Who was it?
Yeah, the big oak tree, in, et cetera. It was urban, but it was thirty-five yards.
What, what, what was he planning to do with that tree?
So he was, that's eighty inches of racks in the base of it, and it's got the three roots. And he's like, you can limit it pretty good. It's, there's a risk of doing that, because any time you take an old limb off a tree, it's susceptible, it's susceptible to disease, but he's like, we looked up inside the tree, and it's a hundred percent rotten. So the chances of it going in different directions is pretty high. He's like, I can pin that, that's, that's what you can do, you can just pin it, take it down. You know, that's, that's the challenge. There's one major range hanging over George's house. And then there's a couple big dead branches where go over the road, and I mean, definitely.
So that thirty-five hundred roots is taken down?
Uh, no, that is two. Uh, running, uh, maintaining the tree's characteristic growth pattern, maybe it has to backline branch removal and reduction cuts on the branches, and then install cables.
So he's going to wrap it, or was he gonna, he was gonna wrap the cable?
I don't think that, I can be kidding between. Because you can start seeing, you really find a lot in both guys.
Because I went down there today to look at it, what is the hole and everything like that.
Did you see that little track kind of going down?
Uh, what about some other?
So that was a lot, I thought that was a lot.
Have you talked to both of them, who's done our own tree work?
No, somebody said Curtis, I don't know if anybody knows Curtis. Chris Curtis, pre-cumeral.
Yeah, uh, Will Curtis. Who, Will Curtis, in Exeter?
Well, yeah, 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 somebody said he's really good, and I'm thinking, well.
Talk to Brian, because he's got a bullback who's done a bunch of work for us before. I think tree is a role of the price, but I think three bays of drugs will improve.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it just seems like on the hots, quite a little depth. Nobody wants a table, I think. Already done a three one tree gate in this town, I think. Don't ask.
That's a dear. That's my story, I'm sorry.
Uh, but those are the things that happen. And if we do find one, we can scout, flag holes next.
Yes.
Wait, wait.
That's right. And a cannon, right?
Yes, cannons, a hundred percent.
He doesn't have, he needs a powder. If you say what I'm saying, we can get, we can get it right.
That's all I have. Uh, real quick question, budget, when are you going to set this up?
We're probably starting that next month.
Yeah.
I don't think they set the calendar yet. Oh, yeah, I think Mike said. Yeah. We haven't, we haven't pulled it, start pulling on the other, so.
Yeah.
Because it'll go quick.
Uh, speaking of which, the survey that we put out?
Yeah.
Um, did you guys see that? We got it posted on the library survey?
Oh, yes.
For all of you at home.
It came out, did it come out in that orange flyer?
Yes, it did, please take it. Tell us what you might be doing.
Cool.
Good.
Yeah?
Good one.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll talk to she's downstairs and get the liaison with her, and make sure it gets posted on the town site, and then can you help with the two websites?
Thank you.
Let's have some things, guys.
All right, yes. You are
I'm Eric.
Just the man I wanted to see.
So Eric.
Eric, you're up.
Okay.
Eric, this is Eric with Town Hall Street.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess I looked for a little input, so, I mean, we talked a few times, I think on the phone, right, about you know, making it a little bit more automated with some, you know, and then, right?
What we're looking for is clear audio and a wider range on camera, and possibly having one this side, so we can see who's speaking.
Right, so we have to get internet cable to either one of the camera locations, right, so the camera's going to look you know, look like this, and have it on off switch somewhere.
And that will allow them to call?
Yep, it has a red light, it's going to need an internet cable.
Jeff, how hard would it can be, Ron?
Uh, well, we just need to run, we need to plug in a network, and I mean, it's, it can be done. You know, it just depends where it needs to go, like if we put a well, put a channel on, you know, because we'll get a wall.
Right, so we need one to both locations.
Like one of them.
Yeah, and obviously, yeah, the back here, we could put it, you know, the higher, the better, you know, not, you know, but just kind of out of reach. You know, um, and then these are a little close. Like, and just in terms of, you know, the audience camera we get, you know, um, but, you know, if you go anywhere.
Or we could even put a shim on it to face it more towards the audience, or we
Yeah, yeah, I mean, right, but, well, it can rotate all that stuff, so, um, you know, you know, maybe just put it here, I guess.
And you need one cable or two?
So they each need a cable, and they each need the audio, you know, a source from the audio system. So I have, there's a lot of echo on here.
This room's terrible for a
Yeah, yeah, uh, but I mean, this would be like a wireless system, and those aren't used a lot. Right, so this is the whole sort of head in. Right, you're gonna have, like, some tabletop mics.
Yep.
Okay, just kind of, you know, go there, and this has to be located, and obviously somewhere. And maybe, and it just has, you know. No, it's just a mixer. Each one of these is a receiver for the, for the audio. Right, and then in the back, they'll have audio logs that you gotta send to the cameras. So that's the, right, so wherever, however we're going to get the audio, wherever this has to reside, obviously needs power, um, and then we have, you know, for the rest of the stuff.
So do the network cables, the network cables go back, go with that?
No, no.
They point to the network?
Yep, so, and then so, we have an on off switch
Yep.
for the cameras.
Okay.
And that, that's going to be just in line with the network cable, like the network runs to the cameras, so there can be a little
If we do power over?
Yeah, power over, yeah, that's pretty easy, you know, it's just like an A D switch.
Yeah.
So A connects internet power, for the camera on, B is empty.
Okay.
It disconnects everything. It's kind of not, I don't know, what's the least?
Small and medium movement.
Yeah, so they're not like as plausible, or
That's plausible.
Is it, I mean, so you, in theory, maybe, you know.
Somehow we have a network cable downstairs, run up here.
Right, that's the
Now, if there is, don't you have any Wi-Fi up in the ceiling here somewhere?
I thought there was.
Actually, that Wi-Fi is connected, it's got a cable to it, so we could maybe use that.
So maybe. Right, it's like, you know, this building This building isn't going to be sort of built for it, I mean, there's not, if there was power in here?
Right.
Well, I don't know if there is or not, but that would kind of need, then you could, you know, put this in there, we could build a little shelf for the cameras, switches on off.
Well, how often, right, we'd have to adjust it, is
You shouldn't have to adjust it, like
You just put it up, you're good to go.
I mean, it'd just be, yeah, you just
Turn on your mics, yeah, turn the, turn the main power system on, and then the mics, you know, we'll just compress them, they turn on, or they pull power back.
Is there a remote to turn them on?
No, no.
There's a, there's a stick on.
Yeah, I was just going to say, put it up there.
And then, uh, you know, these are, they have
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, they have a remote.
Oh, yeah, yeah, these are just triple the
I was just going to say, are they, do they pick up on it?
I mean, they do pick up pretty good, and it's gonna not
We're probably even closer to
Right, you know, then the problem would be like, when the audience talks, right, the further you are away from that might, you could use something like this, but they got, then they got a pass, you know, so it becomes a little more formal.
That's okay.
Yeah, like they have to use this to talk into it, and then, you know, this can also raise problems when people hold it down here, and you guys here are fine, but the mic's not really picking it up.
We work for that, because it probably allows people to say, I can't hear what's being said.
Well, I mean, the other thing we knew too, if you put a podium, and if you're
It's almost everybody goes up to the podium, that's pretty
Yeah, and then you could focus the camera.
Yeah, right on it.
Like, right on that, instead of, unless you want to hold it. Um, you know, we can, we could do, I think the first thing, maybe, is we can do a test with this, and we can just, you know, put this back here and connect it up to the incorporate, and see how this audio sounds in this room. Or get some, something, put a rug in here, or something to take up some of the echo. You know, you can hang insider fall from the ceiling, something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think the biggest challenge is going to be getting the wires and the cameras in this room.
Yeah, that can be done, Jeff.
Yeah, it's just, you know.
Can you come up with a proposal for us, write a proposal?
Yes.
So you think that's, approximately what I talked to you said about a thousand dollars?
I mean, that, yeah, yeah. No, I, yeah, I mean, I don't think that's worth at all, you know, to use up. Um, is this, and do you need a mic over there?
We probably need one here, here, and there.
So you'd have to agree to them, though, you can't help a mic?
Yeah, that important.
Yeah, so four, so it'd be the exact same.
First, that's cool.
So be close to fifteen.
Yeah. All right, so what?
Be close to fifteen hundred for that.
And that, I mean, that doesn't include the cameras, right?
No, the cameras are part of the thing, so, the, the, on the picture, picture would add fifty dollars a month, three hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
Um, that two cameras, but the cameras are included as part of the package.
Oh, okay, okay.
And those, you recommend those cameras rather than something like that?
I mean, that'd work, we can use that, you know, but this is far more not touched by people.
Plus, the other thing about Jeff, these are adjustable, right?
I mean
Or are they just one time adjusted when you want?
Yeah, yeah. So they wouldn't move.
I think, I think if we use something like, the problem is, people sitting here at home, they can't see who's talking, and a lot of times, with the auto on top of the fact, they can't pin, right, it cuts down, and it drops down.
So they would assist me, the more living
I think it's a port economy company that does this, and solves it, and the camera will zoom to whoever's talking.
So you have, yeah.
Yeah.
No, just a little bit better.
Yeah, this is probably around forty thousand dollar system, I mean, I might be twenty thousand, but
Yeah. Unless you got a free fart truck.
Yeah. And if I would have talked to an audio person bottom, I, what type of things you could, I don't know, hang, it's even an option in front of here.
The only thing to do is to try these mics out at a meeting, just to see.
Yeah, and we can set it up back there, and then we can connect it.
Right, you know, and then we can, you know, we can have a couple, get some feedback, listen for some folks.
Okay. So we think, like, pull together a proposal for us?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I can, I'll put up, I can get something together, that, you know, that's going to be about fifteen hundred bucks.
Okay, for the whole kit?
Yeah, yeah, I kind of just sourced up on eBay, and, you know, I don't try to make any money out of it, because, you know.
And then also, when you reference in there what our fee is going to be annually?
Yep, yeah.
Because it's going to bump up, because the other thing that we've talked about
Was just doing all of it.
Was not only the planning board
Yeah.
Come and come.
Yeah, we can show me, and so I would go, I think you got a hundred fifty dollars a month, or eighteen hundred dollars a year. Uh, one camera unlimited bag is three thousand dollars a year, so it's two fifty a month. And then add another camera would be, you know, thirty, well, thirty-three hundred, you know, it's three hundred dollars a month a year. So thirty-three hundred dollars, both cameras. Unlimited, you know, all games, you want it to be one very long.
So I'll, so we can look for that. In the next week or so?
I think, yeah, tomorrow.
Okay, let's look for it tomorrow. That'd be awesome.
So just email the
So the, the round of fifteen hundred, that's just to be equipped, that's not installed, or that's installed?
No, I mean, well, I'll come and help him install it, but I can't handle the wires, it's just a little like
Yeah, you can have somebody that can do it.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, there's going to be installed?
Probably get you a guy?
I don't, I don't
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, I can all work with that person to say, this is what we want, the wires?
Yeah.
And this is the wires we need, but in terms of like, you know, this was a brush
So it's going to, it's going to be tied into this, the network?
It's going to be hardwired.
Maybe, and
I mean, so in theory, I mean, we could set up like a wireless hub.
Yep.
Right, that got the Wi-Fi signal up in this room, and then we can hardwire from that.
That would be easier.
It just depends, well, it also depends on where, you know, where you want to store it, and like, if people touch it, like, that could create a whole host of other problems, if
If you had to say somewhere, maybe?
I don't, yeah, we, yeah.
I don't, well, the problem is getting, getting it, right?
I don't know. Yeah.
I don't know, these things get there.
Yeah, we usually send the kids up there Christmas to get the stuff for
I don't know if there's power there or not, like, definitely something that, like, is sort of
All right, so we've got, so send us your proposal for us, and then we'll figure out, well, it might be, it might be good, maybe we can see if everything happens with a wireless up. Fewer handles.
Yeah, exactly.
And then the wires are going to have to run on the wall, so Put it in a channel if necessary.
Yeah, I mean, we may want to go, like a locking computer cabinet or something, for back there, to put it in, so that nobody does go in and start put the switches on, or that's what they
Yeah, I would start with, can we hardwire from the network problem?
Yeah, I think that's probably
That's, that's like, I do what I want.
And that takes Wi-Fi out of the
Yeah. Yeah, because you have Wi-Fi gaps and jumps and breaks.
Yeah.
Although we have, you know, Wi-Fi, we have, we've got
Well, so there's a difference between the internet speed and Wi-Fi, right? Wi-Fi is
Right.
Wi-Fi can just not work, you know, any time you can hardwire something.
Yeah, right.
When you watch TV, when you stream TV, right, like, it looks great, and all of a sudden it gets pixelated.
Yeah.
And that's all Wi-Fi, right?
Right.
So that's not your internet, you know, that's just like the TV.
Yeah.
So, you know, I had, I had a few installations where it was big cinder blocks, and there was no possible way to get the wire in there, and we went with the Wi-Fi, and they had, they had problems, but not
Yeah.
You know, it's pretty reliable, but if we can avoid it
Okay.
Right, it just
Why don't you all, if you're going to decide to do this, go with the R word?
Yeah, because it'll go, the day that goes out will be the most important meeting of the year, because that's always
So we're, I've got, got the wire up there for a switch in, and then from that switch, we run two wires out, one for that camera, one for that camera.
Yeah, and that, yeah, you can get one, right, so, but then again, you can power for that switch.
Right.
Right?
Right.
But, yeah, so I don't know what's back there, but yeah. Um, you know, we get one wire there, and we can put that stuff, right?
Yeah. Do you know who Caitlin? Do you know somebody that does that?
I know.
All my cables are, like, super busy.
I know, and he's, and he's, he's a good guy, good person too.
Okay.
He just did, he just did, uh, he's worked on my house.
Okay.
He's, he's really good.
You know a guy who was a guy?
No, a guy, I know a lot of guys, I've heard of him, he's a guy, I know a lot.
That's right, so I mean, I wanted, if you do, like, I probably should be come down, and he's looking at this, and maybe talk about the different spots.
Okay.
Uh, because on off switch for the camera, kind of goes something like, so we kind of need this.
In a, in a secure location, yeah.
I mean, yeah. That would probably be more money.
Yeah, okay, Eric, just for humor, we hear, so thirty-three hundred a year was for the everything?
Yeah.
The streaming and everything?
Yeah.
And the gear is going to be about fifteen hundred? What, what, what would we spend that?
I think it's eighteen, yeah, one, one fifty a month, eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, so talk about that.
All right. Any other questions?
We are adding, if these microphones sound, and I can, maybe next week, or I can bring down, do a test, a test system, we can just
Then we can, we can definitely
Yeah, plug it up, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Check that out, well, we'll plug into the cam.
What's the next meeting? Ours, next one was October October, yeah, uh, October again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, I think we just plug it into the There's like
Audio win, or?
Yeah. I'm sure that's the case. Yeah, there's inputs right here.
Okay.
Um, and so then we'll know if it sounds pretty good. I mean, then that might be what you just want to do that.
For like, you know, in the initial?
Yeah.
I think that, he's absolutely right, with having those wireless mics, it's making a kind of a huge difference. But, you know, we should need to test that first.
Yeah.
And then that works, you know.
If the audio sounds, we can just, uh, release the ability for us to do like full meeting minutes, like transcription of the meeting. Fifteen dollars a hour. You get it nice and long.
I think Keisha said she'd be through it herself.
Well, that's a nice part, right, so you get, you get a link in the morning, and then there you have the video and the minutes, and tries to break it up by speaker, and you can play the video and follow along, make any edits you need to make. And then you're done, and then it'll watch the three closed captions for on demand, so that it's pretty, on playback, you have those closed captions. So if the audio, like, I would not try to sell it to you now, because it's going to be sixty percent accurate, because it's, you know, the audio won't be good, but if this sounds, you know, if these work well, um, and the audio is crisp, it could be up to like ninety, ninety-nine percent accurate.
Because I have to have closed captions on my home.
So we'll add that one after, well, after we get out, so the minutes will be done next, that I say, then it's just a matter of cleaning up any inconsistencies within the
I think we both saw it, Keisha, definitely. Keisha, how long is it taking to do the minutes?
Several hours.
Two or three?
Oh, easily.
Easily?
I'm like three times the time we need.
Yeah, and so the down part, so in theory, it's going to be an exact transfer. So it's long.
It's technical, yeah, yeah.
Right, so it's not condensed, but so it's going to be much longer.
But you do something.
But it does save, you know, that's in theory, it's exactly what we said.
And it's fifteen per
Fifteen dollars per hour used, yeah.
And then we think of her time, and Sue's time working minutes, yeah.
And they're done, in theory, pretty quickly.
Okay.
Within a day, so, um, so you, when is the next meeting?
Tomorrow.
I just turned fifty.
Welcome to the club.
So it's October ten, all right. And can we get in here, like, a little bit early, like six o'clock, or is it seven o'clock evening?
Of course.
And then
Unless we have a non-public, which I don't, we won't know until we get closer, and I'll have to do, I'll wait a day or two with you, so
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll send you a lot tomorrow with the stuff of the sales, party this time, hopefully. Get in here an hour or half and test.
Okay.
That'll be cool.
Okay. Eric, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
You get a card, is it?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't even have, yeah, I have, because it starts, you know, I just, I just, I didn't think it would use it anymore. Sorry.
All right, no, actually, I can see if we can get that installed.
I bet you got one.
I can see if we can install it here, if it's on the wall you're standing, it might be a good
Well, if you want to
Oh, let's get it all on.
If you want to come up like, I'll, I'll show it, we can
Okay.
Yeah. Why don't you take care of the common, and
Yep.
The only thing is on the good old
Yeah, got it.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Well, twenty minutes ahead of schedule.
How about us?
Uh, please fire, Mary Samantha. You gave her the U N S.
Yes, so, so we, we actually had a meeting, they recall, happened. We got a meeting on, on this very Thursday, very significant. He didn't know a lot, uh, this is coming from the E nine-one-one side of things, okay?
The change in the nine-one-one?
Yeah, it's not going to take place until January this year, so we've got, we've got a way, so he emailed his wing, he sent me, he sent me, it's, he does have logic permission, but it makes sense, so Co-Rev is basically, it's an app you work on your phone, and you get those, you get those alerts through your phone, so it's in addition to reverse nine-one-one. So we're still going to have reverse nine-one-one regardless, okay? So what the public has to be made aware of is, and I don't know, any
And this Co-Rev app is for the population, so the population, and you can download it on your phone, okay?
So basically, the email letter recently, a couple weeks ago, was that the state is going away from Co-Rev, and they're going on Genesis. Uh, and it's something that got jammed first in two thousand twenty-four. Um, communities can still opt on the rubber, but there'll be a charge, so it seems, you know, I consulted, obviously, the fire district, obviously Jeff Beanster and Tom Potter regarding, it makes sense for us just to go, for the state's going, there's no charge. Um, there'll be more information as we get closer to January first regarding how residents can, you know, sign up for this type of notification. Um, you know, if, like, like I said, Co-Rev is something that we've had for a long time. Um, it's almost like a geo, you know, reverse nine-one-one, if you had a specific incident in an area of town, where we want to give a notification out to a certain area for whatever reason. Um, you know, the reverse nine-one-one could geo map a certain area and send messages to that area. So basically, Genesis is just taking over, um, for the state, they got a contract over Code Red, basically.
So if this Code Red is a jammed up, uh, application, what percentage do you think the folks in town have?
I think that's a really good question.
I didn't know, I, I was unfamiliar with.
Right. It's something the state has, you know, I've seen some blurbs about it, you know, years ago, but, you know, but, you know, being who we are, we don't bad about that stuff because we're, we're going to get information real time, you know, for our radios and stuff, but. And my wife doesn't have it, so, uh, it'd be, it'd be, I'm curious to see how many people I can tell.
I would wager it's probably small.
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah.
Which brings me to that whole point that we've talked about, we talked about protocol that five or six months ago, right after the Calistina.
Yeah.
And the hypothetical, I keep going back to is we have tank trucks or something up by the old Rockingham Station and people need to evacuate, but then they start going this way, now you got a massive traffic jam. And how are we, and it goes back to like, remember that Blue Four rail up, they said everybody throws away except for me and this, um. How do we disseminate knowledge in town on how to handle that? Fire department's going to be up to.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, fire police, you know, with, with, with first line of defense, we, we're going to know what's going on first, okay?
Understand, but if you're down there dealing with the event.
Right.
We're going to be tight on resources.
Well, so, so what we do is, you know, we'll, we'll make, we'll make a phone call to home security, to the duty officer, let them know what's going on and then they can start assisting us doing some of the stuff, so.
Traffic management.
They, they, they can, they can start, you know, we have a lot of stuff now already for Seabrook, so we kind of know where our traffic points are, our traffic control points are and, you know, so we, we've got a very good handle on this compared to a lot of other towns in the state that don't do the Seabrook drill. Just because we do it, you know, constantly, uh, so, you know, but yes, we would, you know, initially, you know, we would call the duty officer, homeowners or emergency management, okay, let them know what's going on. We'll learn, we're going to stand up our E O C, you know, if we can, you know, depending how many pieces we have, and then they would start, they would assist us with, with resources, you know, public information officer, they can, they can supply all that, so we can at least get information on that.
How timely do you think it'll be, Jeff? I mean, what was. Well, definitely, cause something here.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you look at people on Main Street and behind every green.
What's.
What else, what, how do you get that knowledge to them that you need to bail and you need to bail in this direction only?
Yeah, so, so, you know, we, so we just, we just did our camera clock exercise in Hampton last week and, you know, basically, once they get the information, you know, they, if anything happens, they talk about, they have, once they get that information and they, they, they talk about, they have fifteen minutes to get that information out. Now fifteen minutes doesn't seem like a lot of time, uh, and it isn't, you know, in a situation where we have to evacuate quickly, but, you know, we're, you know, that's, we're going to have to utilize now, and we're going to have to utilize the surrounding house, uh, so.
Which may need, uh, Newmarket, we do the same thing, just better what the prevailing winds are and so.
Right, exactly, yeah, uh, but, you know, it's, you know, the biggest thing is, is, is definitely going to be Dan Hall, uh, if something like that happens.
And we're going to get resources coming in, but if they can get in, depending on what the traffic, I hate some of the chickens a little.
No, I, I know.
But when it hits the fan, it's not the time to go.
Yep.
We haven't considered this, or, or so we're overwhelmed because we're in the ramp.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that's where we would use reverse nine-one-one, okay, that's where that would come in, we could do that.
And what kind of information would you do on that reverse nine-one-one?
We could, we could, you know, let them know, you know, we could call them and say, look, you know, you're going to evacuate towards exit, okay? You know, don't go to this Newmarket, don't go to a straddle, you're going to evacuate towards exit, you know, we set our road log, you know, we have to do that immediately if we have an incident down there.
Yeah, I'm not trying, yeah, I'm not trying to be a chicken little here, but I just don't want us to get into a box because we haven't looked at any, and I, and I'm not inferring in any way, shape or form that you guys haven't.
Right.
But it's just, okay, and we got the, all the bases covered as far as we can see for contingency planning.
Yeah, uh, you know, it's, we've got to drill on an accident, but maybe that's something we should do, we should maybe try, who we drill, you know, with something, so that, that would definitely help.
And, yeah, well, in terms of, I mean, they're a pain in the butt, but they're worth their way to go.
Believe me, you know, I'm, I'm all for drills, you know, it's like, uh, you know, we're going to be doing our first preliminary Seabrook drill, uh, October eighteenth, if any of you guys are working down. It might be worth a while for me now, just to see what we do, uh, it's an all, but it's, it'll start, you know, seven thirty, eight, uh, Tom can do that late thirty, uh, and we'll go to coffee. Coffee, we give you lunch and we pay for your bucks an hour, okay? So that's the best, you get paid. But it's, it's likely worth, you know, why don't you both of you come down?
It might be interesting.
It is, just coming down to see how, how it works and how we communicate with the state, uh, you know, we have, we also have a hand radio off.
Oh, that's on the eighteenth?
It's on a Wednesday.
Yeah.
It's on a Wednesday.
There'll be a FEMA representative.
Some of these FEMA will be there.
We do a, we do two practice, we'll do one in October, there's a gas in February, where they get graded by FEMA and able to test.
So there's another one in February?
It's two practice, one in October, one in February, and they actually test as a marsh.
Hey, when you get it made on the February one, can you let me know?
Yeah.
Please drop down down there.
Yeah.
We got somewhere, yeah. There's a, there's a gas.
I was thinking it's February tenth, we go that Wednesday.
No smell?
Yeah, we go when there's no smell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't know that.
So where, where do you meet at?
At the fire station, yeah. And, you know, the plan is, if we do have an emergency, you guys are one of the first people going to get in the back.
Okay.
You know, we're going to call you right away and say, hey, this, this is what's going on, you know, we're going to stand up our E O C.
Are you going to say it to the fire station?
Yeah, it's going to be right there. That E O C is.
Okay, so we need to do a district call, huh? It's down at the end of eighty-seven, and the wind's pulling towards the fire station.
Yeah, well, I think our, our backup is Newmarket, okay, the Newmarket Fire Station, so if we have to, we can go to Newmarket instead of Fire Station. Uh, or if we had to, we could.
Sounds like you guys think it's pretty well under control. I'm just worried about the civilian interface with people.
Yes.
They'll look at something on their phone, go.
Yeah, our worst enemy is, 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 you know, social media, you know, that's why they have these public information officers, yeah, trying, you know, you know, uh, they try to minimize the control because, you know, conspiracy theories come up on social media, but they're crazy.
What about disseminating this knowledge or its plans and getting more knowledge out to the town through either the town clerk or publication somehow?
Town press.
I understand, but I mean, like now, so the people will go, here's our plans in place, so if it hits the fan, here's what will happen, or what can you can expect to happen, and so if you get, you know, reverse nine-one-one calls and you go, I don't know what that is.
Right, yeah.
It makes sense for them too, because I think we have an education issue in the town and how do we, I guess the question is, because I think you guys have got it squared away, but how do we address the education issue?
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, well, it's like, you know, those things that Seabrook sent out earlier, half of them end up in circle of, you know, but there's a lot of information, a lot of good information, uh, that people just ignore, you know, and people always, will always commit, you know, it's, uh, that's probably the weakest link with getting people, but, you know, but. If I have reverse nine-one-one, I love that, reverse, you know.
What will the, so if that transpired, I got a, I would get a nine-one-one call, what would I get on my phone, what would I say?
Three recording.
Not just three, might be actually something.
Well, how, I mean, what would my phone ring and what would say nine-one-one?
Yes, it would ring, yes.
Someone's organized them in, um, the activation of the Seabrook drill down Hampton Beach last summer.
With sirens, huh?
Yes.
Where they went out, cell phones over that certain area, you know, every seventy-five year.
No, so, you know, so what happens is my phone coming along, those are the, the, we talked about that the last.
How do, how do you do it?
So, so what happened, the sirens went off, you know, it took them a good forty-five minutes to figure out what was going on, you know, they knew there was no emergency, because they called a plan, but then, you know, then they had to, then they had to start, you know, there's a lot of information that they had to disseminate and conquer. And then they have to send out, you know, so then they start broadcasting over W O K Q or, you know, they'll start sending out the words on the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so it's, you know, this, this, this is the time yet.
Do they liaison with Sirius or anybody like that to get over any of these, uh, channels or like iHeart or anything?
Uh, it's mostly, I think W O K Q is the, is the main, that's, that's the main radio, and that's, that's what we, that's what we're told, turn it to your radio to, if you get, if you have time to go off, you're supposed to, maybe this is supposed to be W O K Q, W O R A V is something out as well.
Mm-hmm.
But W O K Q will be for people, you know, if you're retiring, you have to turn the radio off and see what's going on. You're going to get a load of it.
As a matter of fact. It's, is it an alarm system or a road alert or a solo?
Yes, yes.
You get the same school.
So it's like the missile alert they had in Hawaii, right? Yeah, Caleb was out there.
Yeah.
Sure form led up.
Yeah, exactly, so I think October, is October four, six? Yeah, FEMA's going to do a work, they're going to learn on their phone from FEMA, okay, they're going to do a nationwide task, I'm at work, I think it's the fourth. Yeah, uh, kind of like that presidential war, we go a few years ago, but they're going to test that, we talked a little bit about that. But really, you know, everybody has, pretty much everyone has a phone, so somehow that, that phone's going to walk, if you're within that geo location, that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we can, you know, you can, you can, you can make that very small, it'll be a street pool, you know, uh, with the cell, and goodness, it's going to be the cell tower right here, okay, so, uh, anybody around, raised their cell towers going to get, get more, if it's happening.
Yeah, I don't know that you guys have done all the work and FEMA, everybody down has drilled and done everything, I just wonder about, I bet I could walk through town and ask some people and they go, what are you talking about?
Let me ask you this, when you were at Bridgewater, did you guys ever do a drill up there for, you know, like a disaster or?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good, yeah, yeah, so.
But it was the same thing, population. Hey, how's that sound?
Well, they call all the tourists up there during the summer, you know, right, you know, it's like, they're not going to have to do, so you really have to tune, tune to something, the sirens are designed to work, okay? And they're not going to give you information, but once you hit that siren, you can tune to a radio station.
Are we talking about a fire station sign?
And we're talking the Seabrook station sign at the fire station, right, the one that, the one that we don't, you know, every Saturday, yeah, so, those work, those work really well.
Of course.
They weren't us to agree with.
Yeah, you know, he said no.
Yeah.
So it's still operational?
It's still operational, they test it twice a month.
So we're just not doing the Saturday, is it?
No, they, they do, they do a silent test, so they, they test the rotations, as a matter of fact, if you look at that siren, a couple times, I'll tell you, notice it rotates, so they actually test the transducers, the batteries, those battery batteries and those things, and they've been all gone through.
Okay.
Uh, they spend a lot of time maintaining those signs.
So am I sweating over nothing?
No, I mean, you bring up good points, you know, and I, and I get what you're saying, uh, you know, if, if you do have, you know, a catch, and that's, and believe me, that's one of my, that's one of the things that comes up on my radar, with all the propane cars that they keep down there now, it's all propane, we're going to push them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we don't have a fire suppression system down there. We don't, you know, we don't have.
We, a momentful explosive.
We don't have armed guards, you, you go to the Seabrook channel, they've got a, a fire suppression system, they've got armed guards over there, you know, and all those cars, all those trucks.
Or sit here.
They sit here before they go away. You know, they go right through, yeah, so.
Do we think about putting something out for like, before annual meeting or something, just put it in a boardroom to kind of give people background and education on this?
We could, I mean, yeah, I mean.
I don't know what it is.
Understand, yeah, but I'm just thinking ballpark, big picture kind of things, I mean, if we could educate half the population in town about it, they'll talk about it to their neighbors or something, you know? Put, put, or shoot them in the general store.
Right. And shoot some emails to them, too, yeah, answer.
Which I talked to Sue today, she, she can only send the locks out at about a hundred and fifty a time, Keisha?
I thought it was more than. What's that?
I thought it was more than.
We used to be under a fifty, they, they downed fast, now we're down to move into under a hundred and fifty.
Per hour or something like that?
Um, I, you, unless it's changed, because every three to four hours we could sign out.
Oh, really?
Massive now. Otherwise it goes down.
All right, just something to think about, not, not to try, I'm not trying to.
No, no, yeah, exactly, but, you know, definitely, please come down to one of these drills so you can see what we do, um, you know, we're trying to, you know, like, I'm personally trying to resurrect these because they were really kind of ignored the last four or five years.
And what happened?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so, you know, and I talked to Tom today, you know, I, I love Tom to death, but he doesn't want anything to do with these pre-drills, you know, he thinks they're a waste of time, which is, you know, it's fine, he's done it a million times, I get it.
Uh, pre-drills are a little bit worse than those. No, that's what I'm going to learn to work in one.
Yeah, 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 so, you know, plus we've got to, we've got to train the people like Tina, so just to get her used to, you know, what goes on.
I think we could, if you see the drill, what we do, have a, like, at school, the daycares, all the moving parts of.
Totally appreciate that, yeah, totally appreciate that, I'm ju, I'm just thinking of the people that are looking involved and going to work and picking the kids up and they're so busy and focused that they're not even cognizant that this exists.
Right, exactly, yeah.
All right, I've got the tenth of February down on my calendar.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah.
We'll do it.
It's actually, it's actually, it's actually, it's, it's, it's pretty relaxed, you know, we at least get to see what goes on, you know, you have, you know, you get a dosimeter, you know, we actually have, Justin, my son, will probably be a red light officer, so we actually monitor radiation, we have, we have, we have a gyre counter down, we screen people with, you know, the product management space, we have to screen them, uh, everybody gets two dosimeters, uh, it's pretty.
Actually, that is a nice word, dosimeter.
Yeah, exactly.
You weren't on the plane going because of the stuff we carry.
Yeah. Uh, so I just had a quick question on, uh, the Code Red and the Genesis, so, so the reverse nine-one-one, is anybody in the area is going to get that word on their phone? But the Code Red app or the Genesis app, right, that's also an app, right?
Yes.
It's moving towards, so is that just going to get you more detailed information?
Give you more information, or if you don't have a digital app, it'll give you information, wait, that, that will slot.
Yeah.
So if you want, you know, just, when you go home, you like, just download the Code Red, I, I looked at it, I don't, I didn't download it at home, you can actually look at the Code Red app and the app store, you can kind of see its nationwide, so, no, a lot of single time use across the country.
Yeah.
I'm not a hundred percent sure how the Genesis app is going to work, uh, you know, they may talk about that, but I'm assuming we're talking in very.
So I mean, maybe, maybe one of the ways to do this is, um, and, and, you know, you don't want the social media portion of this, but, you know, maybe we can put out a QR code to download the app, you know, we can put that on.
Absolutely.
Signs, we can put it on, we can put it on the website, we can put it on.
Hand out at school?
Hand out at school.
Even Facebook is, it's pretty good, and it's, because there are a lot of people actually use Facebook in town, it's pretty big, it's, you know, there's a lot of information goes over that, so.
So if we put a QR code on there and just then say, here's the Code Red app, we're going to be, you know, we'll be testing in, in October and February and then in January, you know, we'll have another QR code for the Genesis app once we have that.
Right.
Maybe it's just a way to get people to start to get along, let them know that, you know, this is going to be a, a better way or a, a more informative way to get through a crisis situation. You know, just, you know, the apps are free, but it takes you five minutes.
Exactly, right, yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, one more.
Another.
Plus you got to pass.
Scroll through, yeah. Oh, just the same one. Passcode. Passcode, once in three, I don't know how they get in. Well, that's good knowledge, guys, thank you.
Yeah. As far as the budget, you know, I think, we're, it's one of the, you know, we, I think we make a ton of money every year, you know, we get eighty-five hundred dollars a year from Seabrook, we're doing our, you know, we just did our inventory today, uh, we have to do that four times a year, we need to do all the, all from San Diego, for all our, you know, all our supplies, the drills that are, you know, the gyre counter, you know, all that stuff. And, you know, you do a few drills and they pass you five hundred bucks a year, it's a pretty good deal. So, you know, but a lot of that money, okay, we can use, you know, we, you know, we have a little bit, so we've done with that money in the past, and we, we bought radios for the bridges, we bought radios for the firecracks.
Signs.
Signs, poles, yeah, uh, so, and that's the other thing we talked a little bit about today, is getting some, some quick, you know, road closed signs that he's going to move, maybe I have a couple of those to sum that money, so we can, you know, keep them at the police station, the fire station, so they can deploy quickly. Those signs will take a little bit, if you need to call them somewhere, if you could.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so. It's just finding a car, trailer, you know, moving, but sometimes it takes a little time, you know? But to have a sign that says road closed, so you can get out there quickly, I mean, we had an incident last, last December where we had barricades, it was so many that it was overwhelming, you know, so we want some, maybe get a few there, we, we'll steer it, we get it deployed quickly when we need to, uh, but something like that, when we have, you know, for situation, yeah, but we have to replace it quick. And we've got the mic, where it's not completely, I'm going to email you about it.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
All right, anything else?
I'm good.
So we'll work on this, we'll, we'll work on kind of a plan, once we get a little more information on Genesis, uh, you know, you might even bring out Code Red now, I mean, you want to put something out there, you know, so.
It's a free app, it's two months or three months, it's on.
Yeah.
Of course, then we say that, then it's the same.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah. Murphy would do as well, like I say, you know, there's, there's other ways, you know, just reverse nine-one-one, so that's, that's, that's going to work in addition to Code Red.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so this, this, there's lots of other ways to get your information, we're likely to be very, we can, we know what's going on.
Right.
I know.
Well done, gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah, very, very, thank you.
All right. We might, I'll be down.
No, no.
I got a couple more things to do. Uh, so just that, that will be something else, we've got to kind of, that's what was coming on. And then it's been the mic.
Oh, okay.
So it's all going, but it's, it's all, it's all, it's all good now.
Mike, who sent that inbox and you put it in, it starts transmoting right away?
It doesn't, you have to turn it on.
Okay. Uh, resident emails, we have two resident emails to discuss.
Yep.
Uh, one is from Mr. Gasper of, on, uh, runway. In regards to the paving on the road there.
Yeah.
And he sent an email and some photos.
Yep.
I have talked to the road agent about it, he went out and looked at it, say, I went out and looked at it, as did you.
I went out.
And we took that, and, uh, I will reference on this, paving is an issue that we've been working on in the past year. And we took that, and I will reference on this, paving is an issue that we've been working on in the past year and a half, that I've been on the board, we have got behind the paving. Uh, the road agent is, has a list of his priorities and what needs to be done, Home League and Pleasant, Pleasant, we're still waiting to hear what the staff said that grant is going on, Pleasant there, we're supposed to get a bit of grant that will assist in that, because that's gonna take a lot of sewer work.
Right.
Um, and I will just continue to push on this to make sure we get back up to speed on our paving, because that's a fundamental responsibility of the town. And probably is what I was talking to Brian today, he said, block type is now four times what it was two years ago.
Yeah.
Since, well, since twenty, early twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
Uh, but we will continue to address the matter, continue to work at it, and I can wager this will be a solid issue at budget time with the road agent, how, how we handle it. Anything you want to add?
I mean, if, you know, if we're looking at these roads and, and, you know, we're looking at budget issues and that, that thing, maybe we can just identify some patching or something that can be done to kind of hold things over in the meantime.
While we address the old area?
Yeah, yeah, and that, I think would be, could be an option for us, I think, we should talk to Brian about that.
And only is being known, if I remember correctly, until which time to finish with the construction of, of that development out there. I just saw a porting foundation out there today, so maybe a little longer on that. Uh, the second correspondence we received was from Mrs. Todd on gear trees about a washout along the road. This is a reoccurring problem, uh, talking to Brian, so maybe, uh, he's gonna take a look at it, he's repaired that after every rains, which we have had.
Yep.
Uh, recently, and maybe a little larger stone instead of the small stuff that pre-quit that, but he's cognizant of it, and he's looking at it.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike, you want to add to that?
Uh, no, I haven't received any other emails.
Okay. We have, uh, a town hall rental agreement.
Yeah.
Uh, between the town and Margaret Dome of Ohio Services for, uh, Dome, and that'll be on fourteen, uh, October, and she has included the check here, orbit, and I would wager we have, I'm thinking a motion to accept the rental contract, uh, the town hall rental with, uh, Mrs. Dome. May I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Hope you may add to that.
Yes, sir.
I believe alcohol is gonna be served at that, per the, um, agreement that the town has, uh, I've been contacted by a woman regarding providing a peace option that day, um, and I told her once the select board approved that, then I would go ahead and consider the option to fulfill what the requirement is to the town with alcohol being in.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay.
Uh, so it says resident hundred fifty-four function without alcohol beverages being served, plus separate security deposit of a hundred dollars.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We have another, uh, town hall rental agreement with, uh, Mrs. Kirk of Abasset Lane, the date of functions fifteen November, and, uh, from seven till nine P M, approximately twenty people. And I don't see any reference, uh, who wasn't ticked off for alcohol, you're not charged, or this one, just that first one. Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept the town hall round to the Gear Trees Homeowners Association. Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Rockingham Planning Commission, membership dues, uh, fee this year is seventeen, uh, twenty twenty-two, we paid one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. The dues request this year is, uh, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Uh, this is an organization that we've sort of been with for a while, if you have a chance to look at it.
Uh, no.
All right, why don't you take a minute, we'll, uh, I'd love to know what you think, yeah?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the twenty twenty-three, uh, fee to be paid.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scott, you got something for us?
Yeah, I have to, um, address the sign of Vernon family fire.
Okay.
So the, uh, the hanging signs were removed, um, and then the sandwich fort sign, uh, disappeared for a little while, and then on the fourteenth, uh, new signage appeared, uh, one on the side of the farm store building, and one on the tree that's in the space right over there, on the opposite side of the driveway, and then the sandwich fort sign appears periodically, uh, in the middle of the driveway, between the two buildings, it was there today, um. I know that, um, in the town ordinance, it mentions, um, the setback of, of a minimum of ten feet, but it does not give a maximum distance on what the town regulates, so my point to this sandwich fort sign, number one, it is another sign, so it's, it's an addition to what is allowed, okay, and it is being placed so that it can be seen from the street, so like today's sign was saying that they were, the store was closed, well, that could be posted by the front door to the store. So people would, I was out going along, and people were pulling in and see the sign, and they kind of stop, right, so they're like, you realize the store's closed.
Is it, is the sign in the D O T approved, cut, it's in the driveway?
It's in the driveway.
Okay.
Okay, and then the two other signs that, that came, that were installed on the fourteenth, um, say farm store and event, and then is, that's in white, and then part of the, like a white portion of a rectangle, and then the other is, is a, comes to a point, and it says park. So I don't understand what that's all about.
So in the town ordinance, it allows you to have an entry exit sign or something analogous to that, but it has to be a one square foot sign?
Okay, but that has nothing to do with park, here, there's one driveway.
Totally, totally understand.
It's not split, there's no median in the middle, to, 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 to have that to necessitate an in and out.
Let me offer this to you, this has been addressed, and it will be, action will be taken on.
Okay, um, I guess I don't have to say anymore, that's, okay, okay. Uh, I, I do want to say that what was, uh, put in the site plan regarding, uh, the flow of traffic when they have an event with the cones in there, they're allowed to have a temporary sign to, to move the parking into the field to direct the traffic, okay, that works very well, in my opinion.
I've been there once, I saw you do that, so it was a small event, so it's a small sample, but I have it in my offices, say, and it's not safe during the bigger events.
It seems to flow well, with, with the cones and, and that temporary sign telling them to go that way into the field, so. Where, where I have a beef with one, I'm saying that one's good, so, just trying to be fair.
Right, okay. Um, but the sandwich fort sign has been in the D O T cut, up to the driveway cut?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's dead smack in the middle between the two buildings. And I can send you pictures if you want.
Is that all right? Mike, anything else?
Uh, no, no, appreciate seeing what you're talking about, I drill right there, just about every day, so, okay.
Okay. Uh, fire minute meetings, minute meetings, we have the informational meeting from Hilton property on, this is on the fire station, Denver.
Yep.
And also the twelve September, uh, select order minute meetings, so we're gonna take a look at those, and.
Do you want to table these till Mike gets back, so you can have a look, or?
In case you didn't, Mike, look at the, Michael, look at the Hilton one?
He did not.
He did not, okay.
Yeah, I did not say that, I just finished.
Okay, then, uh, if you're good on the little thing, just go ahead and tell the tech.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other businesses coming forward? Any open items you've got, Mike?
Uh, no.
No. In that case, I'll do a, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, just a little, uh, I'll, I'll update you guys on, on the last, uh, constipation meeting next, thanks for giving me the mic, but I'll get both of you guys on.
All right, so we'll table those till the next meeting.
Yep.
Uh, go here, a motion to a drill?
I'll make a motion to a drill.
Second.
All in?
Aye.
Aye.
And it is twenty March, sorry, eight fourteen.